Good evening. I would like to call the June 27, 2016 Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Martin is absent. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Martin?
移到
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to excuse Mr. Martin, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Formal approval of the city council regular meeting minutes on May 23, 2016. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of the last meeting?
I don't know the mayor.
No mayor?
No.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as... Mayor's announcements. Really, nothing on there this evening. I would like to thank the Dayton Sodbusters. We did have a great day.
Claude.
Or Dayton Claude... what did I say?
Sod.
Sodbusters.
Claudebusters. Claude meaning that they're a team of farmers as their club team. And it was a great baseball game. I'd like to thank everyone who participated and played. Very hot day. We hung in there through how many innings?
Nine innings.
Nine innings. And I think we were leading up until the sixth inning.
Yeah, and then they...
And then we...
Then they started playing.
Then they started playing.
Then they started playing ball.
So, no major injuries for some of us older guys, but it was a great event. So, thank the Dayton Claudebusters and the Bicentennial Committee for putting everything together. I think they said between, not at one time, but through the whole event, between 350 and 400 people came out. So, it was a great event. That's really all I have this evening. Introduction of ordinances. We have a few of them this evening. Ordinance number 2016-6. Mrs. Seager-Lawson.
Ordinance number 2016-6, an ordinance amending Part 6, General Offenses Code of the Belbrook Municipal Code, whereas the city periodically reviews its policies and procedures, and whereas the city has determined that sections of the General Offenses Code are duplicated from sections of the Ohio Revised Code, and whereas the city will use the Ohio Revised Code section when appropriate, and whereas the city desires to eliminate the sections of the General Offenses Code that are duplicates of the Ohio Revised Code. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1, that Chapter 606, general provisions administration and enforcement of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in its entirety. Section 2, that Chapter 612, alcoholic beverages of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in its entirety. Section 3, that the following sections of Chapter 618, animals of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in their entirety. This is Section 618.02 through 618.20, although some sections remain. Section 4, that Chapter 624, drugs of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in its entirety. Section 5, that Chapter 626, fair housing of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in its entirety. Section 6, that the Chapter 630, gambling of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in its entirety. Section 7, that the following sections of Chapter 636, offenses relating to persons of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in their entirety. And this 636 goes through Section .001 through Section .25, with some sections remaining in place. Section 8, that the following sections of Chapter 642, offenses related to property of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in their entirety. And this one goes through 642.01 through 642.37. Section 9, that the following sections of Chapter 648, peace disturbances of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in their entirety. Sections 648.01 through 648.12. Section 10, that the following sections of 660, safety sanitation and health of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in its entirety. And this goes 660.01 through 660.16. Section 11, that Chapter 666, sex-related offenses of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in its entirety. Section 12, that the following sections of Chapter 672, weapons and explosives of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in their entirety. This is 672.01 through 672.19. Section 13, that Chapter 698, penalties and sentencing of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in its entirety. Section 14, that this ordinance shall take effect September 1, 2016. And this is just taking out a lot of unnecessary sections of our municipal code because they reference the Ohio Revised Code.
Yes, exactly. They are verbatim from the Revised Code. I think the original intent was that you could charge somebody with a local code violation as opposed to a state one. It's to our benefit to provide, to charge them under the Ohio Revised Code, particularly as this section more. We did the same thing with traffic a few months ago. But there's a lot of things in here. There was stuff about workers' comp fraud and Medicare fraud, things that we're not ever going to deal with here locally. It's going to be handled by somebody else. So, the effect of this is it takes a 330-page section down to 21 pages, leaves some of the things locally, like particularly the section on animals. There's several things that we have some local ordinances on that it leaves. But it really cleans that up and gets back to just the sections of code that we actually use.
And this is only introduction. We'll have a public hearing on it at our next meeting in July, correct?
Correct. July 11.
Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2016-6?
I move that we introduce ordinance number 2016-6.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Seager-Lawson to introduce ordinance number 2016-6, an ordinance amending Part 6, General Offenses Code of the Belbrook Municipal Code, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, introduction of ordinances. Ordinance number 2016-7. Mr. Schweller?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance number 2016-7, an ordinance authorizing the city manager/finance director to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2017 to the Greene County Auditor. Whereas the city is required to prepare and submit the tax budget for 2017 to Greene County Auditor no later than July 20, 2016, following a public hearing. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1, that the tax budget for fiscal year 2017 as attached hereto be approved for submission to the Greene County Auditor to guarantee the city's eligibility for the allocation of local government funds in 2017. In Section 2, this ordinance should take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. What follows, a number of pages of detail regarding our budget and the amount requested within and without the 10 mil limitation is the amount of $3,25,000. This is the first step in the 2017 budget process with regards to the county and I guess our levy, our levy-enforced villages out there, funds out there actually. It's something we do every year and it's a recurring item and...
Yeah, it's required by the auditor to, so they can allocate local government funds and then it's the first step in certifying the levies that we have for the next fiscal year.
Any questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2016-7?
I'd like to move the introduction of ordinance 2016-7.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to introduce ordinance number 2016-7, an ordinance authorizing the city manager/finance director to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2017 to the Greene County Auditor, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, ordinance number 2016-8. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2016-8, an ordinance granting an easement to the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for improvements to the State Route 725 road embankment along Sackett-Rite Park. Whereas the city of Belbrook owns certain parcels of land adjacent to State Route 725, whereas the State of Ohio Department of Transportation has initiated a project to protect the State Route 725 roadway embankment from erosion created by Sugar Creek, and whereas the State of Ohio Department of Transportation requires an easement of .635 acres to complete this project, and whereas the State of Ohio Department of Transportation has offered to pay the city of Belbrook $10,925 for this easement, now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1, the city of Belbrook grants the easement attached hereto to the State of Ohio Department of Transportation. Section 2, that the city manager is authorized, hereby authorized, to execute the attached easement and such other related documents as may be required. In Sections 3, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, this will also require a public hearing at the next meeting, but just to give you a little sense of what this is, the city owns the land, Sackett-Rite Park, the entrance off 725, even though it's not in the city. It's part of our well field there. ODOT is coming in. They're having some issues along 725 as you go, I guess, to the east out along 725, past the entrance there. There's some embankment issues there on the road that they need to shore up. So, they're going to do a stormwater drainage project along here. To do that, they are, want to acquire an easement from us to do that work in. Again, it's .635 acres. They have done, as part of their process, they have done appraisals of the property and all that. They came back, they're the ones who came back up with the number of $10,925 for this .635. They compared it to other recent purchases in the area. Really, this land to us, to the city is nothing. To the park district, it's really not much. It's an existing ditch. It doesn't really impact anything in that park already. So, they need to do the project. If they're willing to pay us to do it, then we'll take it. It's my opinion. But it's, they've come to us, but they need to acquire this easement so they can do this project. Once they have this easement, I'm not sure of their timeframe, but I imagine it probably won't be until either later this year or until 2017 until they actually do the project. But we are one of the easements that they need to get along 725 there to complete this project.
The amount is fair?
I think so, based on, when I looked at their appraisals, they looked at four or five other, they gave us the full appraisal that they had done, independent appraisal. It looked fair based on the per acre price. And for us, the value of that land is virtually nothing. So...
It's a ditch.
Yes, it's a ditch that isn't really used. And we use it, obviously, that air, that land for the well field, but beyond that, we don't need it for anything. So...
And then digging in this area is not going to affect our well field at all?
No, no, because we're far enough away from that. We're not that close to the road. So, it shouldn't have any effect. And they're not really going to get that deep. I think they're going to, they're going to tear up that entrance because they've got to replace, there's culvert pipes underneath the entrance there. They've got to take care of that. But beyond that, I think it's just going to be reinforcing the existing ditch.
That's that one field that floods and runs across there to the creek, to Sugar Creek. So, when you go down before you get to the turn out of town, that's bottom land there that's going to soon be park district. That's what they're talking about.
Oh, on the other side, yes. Right.
Yeah, it's, I remember going over the road in Rushman, if you go out. So, and this is, the state has to do, this is, they have a very regimented process for any of these takes. So...
They did give us the option to donate the land, but I figured it was...
It's the state, it's not the township.
We put enough money into the state, right. If it was the park district or the township that we're asking for it, then maybe we'd consider donating it, but...
Not since the local government funds have been...
Right, we'll get it. We'll get it.
...totally, I think.
$10,000 at a time.
Exactly. Any other questions for Mark?
Have we talked to the park district on timing wise so this doesn't have to end December and all the Pee-wee footballs going on and all that kind of stuff?
Yes, they're fully aware. They're involved in this. ODOT's been in touch with them also. So, they, they have to deal with us because we're the landowners, but from a project coordination, they're going to deal more with the park district.
Okay.
And the other thing I'll say is, we have, on the other side, on the, on the driving range side, there's a ditch along there that's maintained by ODOT that we've had. When that's not cleaned up over time, we have issues. It impacts us. We're going to, if this is approved, at the next thing, we're going to condition my signing the easement upon them doing the work on the other side because we can't get them to do it otherwise. So, maybe we can get them if we don't sign their easement. So, that's the only leverage we have with ODOT. They don't listen to much else.
It's a pretty big bureaucracy.
Mark, that involved closing 725 at all?
Um, they did not say that. So, I don't believe it would, but they did not specifically say that.
Okay.
And that probably, they'd have to work with the county on that.
Yeah.
I assume.
Yeah, I'm sure they would probably want to limit that. But there'll probably be some at least lane closures, I would have to believe, as they're working along there. So, if they're going to flag it or whatever. But I don't know if they plan to close the whole thing or not. They're not really doing anything under the road, but certainly when they're working along the side there, they'll probably want to flag it, I would think.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2016-8?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2016-8.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to introduce ordinance number 2016-8, an ordinance granting an easement to the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for improvements to the State Route 725 road embankment along Sackett-Rite Park, seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one more introduction of ordinance, ordinance number 2016-9. Ms. Mittelstetter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. An ordinance amending Article 3, Section 3.02, definitions of the city of Belbrook zoning code, to revise the definition of kennel. Whereas, an amendment to remove the word "training" from the definition of kennel in the zoning code was requested by a business owner, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board held a public hearing on the requested amendment on June 22, 2016, and unanimously approved the amendment and recommended adoption by city council, and whereas all amendments to the zoning code must be approved by ordinance. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1, that the following amendments to the Belbrook zoning code be approved with deletions shown by brackets and strike through and additions shown by italics and underlined. Article 3, construction of language and definitions, 3.02 definitions kennel. Subsection A, any lot or premises used for the sale, or deleting training, boarding, or breeding of dogs, cats, or other animals for commercial purposes. Subsection B, any lot or premises upon which are kept more than four animals which are over the age of four months and which are either dogs or cats. Kennels are not included as permitted principal or accessory uses in any residential zoning districts and so are not allowed in those districts. An excess number of dogs and/or cats on premises that exist as of the effective date of this ordinance, May 26, 2010, may remain without penalty until the permitted number of dogs and/or cats is achieved on the premises. No additional dogs and/or cats may be added to any such lot or premises until the number of dogs and cats is reduced to three or less. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, this is another one to set for a public hearing. The planning board met last week to review this. They had a prior meeting to discuss this proposed amendment by deleting the word "training." Really, the definition of kennel is intended to limit the, what a typical kennel is defined as. It defines that, that's what subsection A. Subsection B is what we've used in Belbrook to limit the number of dogs in residential, dogs and/or cats in residential areas. But by eliminating the word "training," it allows for a kennel to be, well, not a kennel, but it allows for a business that has dog training to exist in the central business district, which is downtown. So, that's really what this is focused on. There's not going to be any boarding of dogs at this business, anything like that. It's just going to be a training facility. With that word in there, we felt that it was not to be allowed. So, there is a business that's going to go into a location in downtown that will do some dog training, and that's what, by amending this, they'll be allowed to do that.
So, the dogs come in, get for their class and go home?
And go home. Yeah, they don't stay overnight. They don't stay for an extended period of time. We liken this to more like a grooming, like a groomer would be where, you know, maybe they're there for a little bit of time, but it's not overnight. It's not for, you know, beyond that. And there's a fairly limited number of dogs that will ever be there at a single time.
Sure.
You also have three, at least, at least three veterinarians, two downtown, one up the hill.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
And of course, this is going to be a public hearing. So, but if anyone has any other questions?
Do we have much feedback on this, Mark, prior to the planning board taking the issue on, or...
No, no. We did, this was really just a specific request that we had from a business owner that they were going to put a business in. And then as we began to read, ironically, that word "training" appeared when we made the last changes to this. It was not in our previous code, but in 2010, when we changed the number of dogs, that word appeared. I didn't go back completely look, but I'm assuming it was in the definition in another municipality. Probably had it in there. And we're like, oh, that would make sense to put in there. So, we put it in there and now we're going to take it back out. But I don't, in reading it for this purpose, I don't think it really belongs in there. It's not necessary for what we're trying to regulate.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2016-9?
Yes, Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number 2016-9.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Mittelstetter to introduce ordinance, ordinance 2016-9, an ordinance amending Article 3, Section 3.02, definitions of the city of Belbrook zoning code, to revise the definition of kennel, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have two resolutions this evening. First, Resolution 2016-T. Mr. Greenwood?
Let's see. Yes, Mayor. Resolution number 216-T, a resolution accepting the bid submitted by Smith Construction for the Plantation Trail Culvert Replacement Project and to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract in connection therewith. Whereas, the city of Belbrook advertised for bidders for the Plantation Trail Culvert Replacement Project according to specifications prepared by the city's engineer, and whereas, Smith Construction was the lowest and best bidder for the project. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1, that the bid submitted by Smith Construction for the Plantation Trail Culvert Replacement Project with a bid price of $266,272 is hereby accepted. Section 2, that the city manager is hereby authorized to do all things necessary to execute a contract with Smith Construction Incorporated as stated above. Session 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, this is a capital project that we have in the budget for this year. It was a grant application through the Ohio Public Works Commission that we, the funds become eligible July 1 of this year. So, we went ahead and had the engineering completed. We did the bidding. We can't actually sign the contract until after July 1, but council can award it. We did receive three bids. The lowest was from Smith Construction for just over $266,000. They were all less than what the engine, all the bids were less than the engineer's estimate. We have contacted the references for Smith Construction. They've done work for, I believe, the city of Kettering and a couple other local jurisdictions, and they've all had positive things to say about them. Eighty-four percent of this project will be funded through Ohio Public Works. So, of that $266,000, we'll get $223,000 back in grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission. So, the cost to the city is fairly nominal. We expect to have the project complete by the end of the year. This is just a street view of the project itself here. Most people probably don't even know this culvert exists. It's over the Brewster's Run, just to the north of Bellmead on Plantation Trail. There's a little culvert there. And you can see here where this asphalt patch is. It's, over the years, it's had several collapses, not the pipes themselves, but just the work underneath it has collapsed in. So, we've done a lot of work in this area to fix that. But basically, what is going to happen, right now, there's two 60-inch corrugated metal pipes in there. We're going to take those out, obviously, and then there's going to be a one single-span cast concrete culvert that will go in there. So, it will include, obviously, the replacement of this. There'll be paving on either end of this too, obviously, to match up what exists there. But the project, we hope, will get started here, probably late July, but is scheduled to be completed before the end of the year.
Any questions? I've driven over it probably 10 times a week. I'm not saying where I'm going.
Is this going to affect school bus routes at all, or...
Probably not on that one. It may impact it, but that, that little area is, you know, might there on Hillcrest, if anyone comes down, I don't know what the buses will do. They probably won't be able to, I don't know if they loop through there, but we'll let them know. They'll be fully aware of it. And they're very good about rescheduling it, rerouting their buses accordingly.
They're close enough together. There's routes that...
Right. This isn't a only one-way-in, one-way-out type thing.
Well, the bottom there is, the worst-case scenario is they have to go to the end, and then there's a, you could pull in two ways and turn the bus around.
Yeah, there's two stub streets there.
There's two stubs. One goes into apartments, one goes into nowhere, Bill. And, because that is a dead end, once that's closed.
Right.
On Hillcrest.
Okay.
Seeing no other questions, may I have a motion to adopt a Resolution 2016-T?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 216-T.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Greenwood to adopt Resolution 2016-T, a resolution accepting the bid submitted by Smith Construction for the Plantation Trail Culvert Replacement Project and to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract in connection therewith, seconded by Mr. Schweller. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one more resolution this evening. Resolution 2016-U. Ms. Seager-Lawson.
Resolution number 2016-U, a resolution approving the replat of lots number 8, 9, and 10 into lots number 8A and 10A, Highview Terrace subdivision, Section 2. Whereas, the Ohio Revised Code requires a replat for changes of lot lines or easements in a platted subdivision, and whereas the city of Belbrook's consulting engineer and the Belbrook Planning Board have recommended approval of a replat of lots number 9, 10, 8, 9, and 10 into lots 8A and 10A, Highview Terrace subdivision, Section 2. And whereas the city of Belbrook subdivision regulations stipulate that changes to a recorded plat shall be approved by the action of the Belbrook City Council. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1, that the replat of lots number 8, 9, 10 into lots number 8A and 10A, Highview Terrace subdivision, Section 2, is hereby approved for recording purposes. Section 2, that the mayor and clerk of council are authorized to affix their signatures to the revised record plan. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, this is a, I guess, a lot consolidation. We've been talking with the developer of Highview Terrace for over a year about, they have, there used to be three lots, as you mentioned, 8, 9, and 10. And you can see on this diagram here, these grayed-out areas were the existing lot lines. So, that, this was 8, 9, and 10. They're basically eliminating Lot 9 and just creating 8A and 10A. There is a, an owner of Lot 8A that is ready to build a house there. They just needed a little bit of extra room. So, as part of this, there was a, or a stormwater line that went along this easement that has to be relocated over to the new lot line. And then this little notch out here was created because there's a retention area down here that had to be relocated to accommodate that. So, they actually took a portion out of the reserve area that's going to be dedicated to the city. They actually took a portion of that out so that they could accommodate the location, the revised location of that retention area there. So, planning board did have the opportunity to meet and discuss this. There's no, no real issues with this. Our engineer has reviewed everything and is satisfied with this. So, they are ready to move forward if council chooses to approve this.
Anyone have any questions? Which, so this would be on the east side of...
West side. So, as you come in, you come in down here.
Okay, gotcha. So, the creek's back down, okay.
Yep, the creek's down here. Lot 7 is probably the newest house, is Lot 7. So, they've, if you've been back there, they've done a lot of fill work. They had to put a lot of, this is probably the steepest embankment in that subdivision. They had to do a lot of fill work on Lots 7 and 8 to do this. We attempted to get this complete before we did the revised preliminary plan. Then we wouldn't have to come back and replat it, but they weren't able to. They didn't have it complete at that point. So, we went ahead with the revised preliminary plan and this, these two lots on the revised preliminary plan show up as 8, 9, and 10, but they will now be consolidated into 8A and 10A.
Any questions? I don't, I don't personally see any issues. So...
No.
Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt a Resolution 2016-U?
I move that we adopt Resolution number 2016- I move that we adopt resolution number two thousand sixteen dash U.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Seager Lawson to adopt resolution twenty sixteen dash U, a resolution approving the replat of lots eight, nine, and ten into lots eight A and ten A, Highview Terrace subdivision, subdivision, section two, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, city managers report.
Yes. First, I'd like to echo the mayor's comments. The community picnic was, I thought, a success, even though we lost the baseball game. But it was still good. I want to thank the Park District. They were the ones who really organized a lot of that and put it on. Then there were volunteers, I know, that did a lot of work. And of course, the bicentennial committee did a lot to, to get that organized. And Randy Pavlak did a lot to organize a ragtag bunch of players out there. So it was a good time. I, I enjoyed it. I know the mayor did too. So that was, that was good. On the bicentennial, there's still a couple more events coming up. There's Ice Cream Social in July. I'll have the specific date out at the July eleventh meeting. And then the, at the conclusion of the Lions Festival, there's fireworks. I know they're still doing fundraising for that fireworks. They have committed to doing the fireworks. The, the length of the show is depending on how much money they get in donations. So if anyone interested in donating, they can go to the bicentennial, bicentennial website and get that.
Belbrook two hundred dot com.
Belbrook two hundred dot com.
And then there is a link on our website, so you can go to the city website.
Right, if you go to the city website. A question I have for council. So in the two thousand sixteen budget, we included ten thousand dollars for the bicentennial celebration. We committed to doing the banners, the street banners. We did some, we've, we've done some things through the museum. They've had a speaker series. We've spent some money with that. As of right now, it looks like we'll have about five thousand of that ten thousand dollars remaining in that budget because the banners were far less expensive. And we didn't do as many as we thought we might at one point. But I think we, they, they look good where they are, so I don't think we need to do anymore. The question is, are, is there any desire for council to provide a donation for the fireworks, to spend either a portion or all of that remaining budget? If there is, then I'll let the bicentennial know so that they can plan accordingly.
Can we write a check to their foundation?
Yes.
And then that way it'll go funnel back through and we won't?
Yes.
Yet, technically.
And, and from a, yes, we are not, we're not.
It'll be a pile of money, so we won't be technically.
Right. And that's how.
But this will help them.
This will help them. It'll go through the, the, the green giving is their sponsor agency for the, the foundation, and, and the money will go there. And we have the ability to do that. But they are the ones, the bicentennial patriotic celebration committee are the ones that are signing the contract with the fireworks. We've reviewed that contract. We've had our insurance because it's gonna be shot on city property is where they're going to initiate over in second rate. So, you know, we're, we're an additional insured, all those different things. But from a financial standpoint, they're the, they're the signing entity for the fireworks.
I, I, just real quick, my quick opinion on it is, I guess we, in my opinion, we, we agreed to the ten thousand. I think it's a big deal for the city to have a two-hundred anniversary. I know Miami'sburg is getting ready to plan theirs, which is gonna be a year-long celebration. I think they're targeting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was what I was told, which I don't know if that's correct or not. But if we, since we've budgeted that much, I would recommend that we note that's our limit. And that's what we agreed to. How they spend it, which we agreed and bought the things we needed. I think the fireworks are a good idea. And I'm sure that someone will not be happy that we have fireworks, because they always are, but it is two hundred anniversary.
Are there any other expenses that we were looking at for that to support? Is this the final one?
This, this should be the final one. Like I said, we did the, we did the banners and, and that. And then we, we've done some things with, through the museum. They've had some additional speakers that are still going to be coming in. So there's minimal expenses, but there are some expenses with that. But beyond that, the, the bicentennial committee has done a good job of incorporating these things. The community picnic, the Park District did. They did all the advertising. They did everything related to that. And, and they handled those expenses. And the Ice Cream Social that's coming up is the ministerial association that's handling most of that. So there, there hasn't been a lot of other expenses that, that we certainly as a city have had to take on.
I agree with the mayor. I think we should give the balance of what we had budgeted to the, to the fund for the fireworks.
Yeah, I agree. We already committed it, so however they want to spend it, it's.
I agree. Good expenditure.
That's, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone was fine with that. So also, as Mr. Martin's not here, but he has notified everyone that he is moving out of the city and will no longer be eligible to be on city council. We don't have an exact date on that at this point. Once he is returned from vacation, we'll, I'll try to get that from him. But I guess the question that I have is the process. The last time this happened was when Mr. Ritzel moved out of the city. Sort of similar situation. There was a vacancy. We put an advertisement, at that point, I think we put it in the Xenu Gazette. We put it in there. We're required to advertise for the position. We received five applications for the position. And at that point, the Community Affairs Committee, the three members of the Community Affairs Committee interviewed those five candidates. And then they made a recommendation to council. So we can do something similar to that. The only exception being that Mr. Martin is one of the members of the Community Affairs Committee, so we probably have to appoint someone. Or we can do it where it's a council as a whole. We'd have to advertise it as a public meeting. We'd have to enter into executive session. But that certainly is not an obstacle to that if, if council as a whole would like to interview the candidates, the potential candidates for the council vacancy.
Okay with council as a whole, as long as there's not like a hundred people. I know that's an exaggeration. But if there is a bunch of people, it seems like maybe Community Affairs could narrow it down. I don't know.
I would, I would agree with that. I think that, depending, I don't know what number that is, because you may have, say, four really, really good candidates. And so then, but I think that's a great idea. If you have ten, then yes, I think that's a good idea. But if you only have four or five.
We could just interview them all, yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll put the add-in. Once I get a, a more firm date from Mr. Martin, we'll put the add-in so that the timing of that makes sense. And then once we get the applications, then we'll sort of see how many we get based on the deadline. And then if there's more than five, I'll, we'll get in touch with the Community Affairs, Mrs. Mittelstetter is the chair of that, and, and see what we want to do with that. But otherwise, we'll.
Are you okay with that, Eileen?
Yeah. When does John's term expire?
He just got reelected.
That's what I thought it's.
Yes. So this, and this question came up earlier, this was, no, this, and I'll, I'll verify that, but he, whoever is appointed then fulfills the rest of the term. So they would basically be, have a three-plus-year term.
It's the same as our term, I think. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, he was.
Those cities are different. I know some are two years.
And I know townships are different, that, you know, you have to be, go to the next election, you know, township election and things like that.
Yeah, that's what I was wanting to say, go to the next election and then he's.
No, and I will verify that, but no, that's, in, in the last case, when Mr. Ritzel left, he only had like a year left on his term. So it wasn't really an issue there.
Yeah.
So I, I will conform what, that, to make sure that we're correct on that, but.
I think the city charter does say you fill the whole term.
That's what I thought. I, that's.
That's what I.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, I'm fairly certain that's what it is, but I, as, as soon as I say that, I don't.
Townships are higher, but townships are higher revised code, and I know townships aren't that way.
The charter speaks to it, and that's what I just want to verify that that's what it is. I'm, I'm almost certain that's what it is, but. Okay, so we'll, we'll work on that. In your, your memo, I sent out about, we've sent out letters for, about dead trees that are affecting public streets and sidewalks. Don Buechek has been sending out those letters. So this year, we have sent out thirty-seven letters to property owners who have dead or dying trees that may impact public right-of-way. Of those, we had twelve that complied. We've had six that have contacted us at least, and at least have discussed it. And we've had nineteen that have ignored us. Of those nineteen, seven of them got letters last year and ignored us. And so they continue to ignore us. And I know we talked about this briefly towards the end of last year, about how we did not put a deadline in there because a deadline means, implies to me that we're gonna do something. And until we decide what, what we're gonna do, I hate to put a deadline. And so when people call, you know, we're just trying to get them to take care of the dead trees on their properties. It's not really a liability to the city, particularly if we've notified people. It's, it's their responsibility. It's on their property to take care of it. But, you know, we obviously want to keep the city safe, and we want to keep our residents safe. So I guess the question comes back to council. We talked about it in the past. Really, our option would be to have the work done and then assess the property owners for that work. And we sort of, last year, we talked about it, and we just, we decided not to do it at that point. We've had this discussion also with sidewalks is the other, is the other one that we've had over the years, where we mark sidewalks. And then we basically, it's almost an honor system where people are expected to fix those, but there's no, there's no repercussions if you don't fix them. So I guess that's sort of the question as we move towards the end of this, this year, you know, do we want to initiate where the city, we, I'm assuming would hire a contractor to do this, and then we would assess that cost back to those property owners? With, if we were going to do that, there would be a lot of more notifications than just a single letter that has gone out so far. We are intending to send another later, letter later this summer, but the question is, do we put a deadline in there? Again, to me, a deadline implies that if you don't do it by the, something else is going to happen. And we've not had the something else to do, so.
Do we pay a contractor to trim trees or anything for any other purpose? I'm, I'm just wondering if, if we could just add these trees to something that we're already doing or not.
A lot of, we'll, we'll go through and trim trees ourselves when it's just cleaning them for school buses and just making, you know, routes that, for, you know, the medics and the engines and stuff like that to make sure that the routes are clear. We'll do that ourselves. And then we have a couple different contractors that we use to, when we have trees on city property that we have to take down or in the, you know, things like that, we have a contractor. If we're going to do it on a, you know, a larger scale, you know, twenty or so properties, we would probably put out an, an RFP or something like that and say, okay.
RFQ, maybe.
RFQ, just something to, to get for that larger scale. The contractors we use are a little bit smaller. I don't know that they would want to commit to doing twenty different properties. And this would be a somewhat unique relationship because it would be the city doing it on somebody else's property. Not everyone wants to get in the middle of something like that.
How dangerous are these situations that are left?
That's really, you know, we, they're dangerous to the point that you look at them and they're dead trees. But we don't know, I mean, what is a dead tree? I drew, I was driving today and I saw somebody had cut down a tree that was probably six foot wide, and there was probably four foot of the inside that wasn't there anymore. So, I mean, you don't really know until, you know, a tree or a branch could come down at any time, even from a live tree for that matter too. But you don't know. But these are the obvious things that, that we've seen that, that could have an impact.
Mark, what would be the scope of work? I mean, when you're trying to alleviate a danger, just laying a tree down would take care of that. And that's what the city's worried about. Would you want the whole tree cut up and the stump ground and the yard fixed? I mean, at what point?
And that, that would be something, right. I, I think probably at least the whole tree down. I don't know that stump grinding, I think, because once you get it down to that point, it's not, it's no longer a, a threat. But I don't know that you'd want to leave, you know.
Property maintenance issues and lanes.
You know, so if you leave, you know, fifteen foot of the, of the, of the tree there, then, you know, that's just really aesthetically not the most pleasing.
You know, some, some people can't take a tree down for obvious reasons if it's in a bad spot with wires or whatever.
Yeah.
Is it something that maybe if it got down, the property owner could take care of the rest? I don't know. I'm just, I'm just asking. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, you know, if, if they could, what we're looking for, particularly out of these nineteen, is for them to, we're willing to work with people to get something done. We understand that, you know, but just, we've sent letters on multiple occasions and we get nothing out of people, and that's.
You got seven, you got seven that have already received letters prior. So I think I would start with them and some, then some kind of letters saying, you know, you are gonna have to take some action and then follow, I don't know what else you could do.
And, and I guess.
Certified letter to make sure they get it.
And there's different ways we can contact them, but I guess ultimately, like, what, how long do we want to send these letters before we actually do something? Is it, you know, do they go through two, you know, because once you get to October, it's awful difficult to go out and point to somebody's tree and say, this one's dead and not. So that's why we tried to bump it up a little bit more. So do we, do we focus on, on the seven that we started with last year? We've sent them again this year, and those are the seven that we, we go and do this and, and work to, you know.
We've already notified them twice. I mean, this would be the third time that we say, if you don't take it down by X date, we're gonna take care of it.
And I think every tree's gonna be different. There's gonna be situations that are, are worse than others that probably need immediate attention, potentially, where the other one's, okay, it's bad and it's dead, but it doesn't look horrible and it's not gonna really hurt someone.
Have we done this ever before?
No.
We also have the Emerald Ash border now too, which is, you know, and a, a lot of other cities, do we, what are other cities doing? They're probably taking a much more harder line.
I, I'm assuming that they're, they're, yeah, they're, they're taking them down. And, you know, some of them are doing it probably with their own crews and taking them down and assessing them or, or contracting. But it really just comes down to the, I guess, the philosophical, you know, what do we want to do? Do we just want the property owner to have ultimate responsibility and that's all we're gonna do? But, or do we want to step in and, and do what they're not willing to do?
Well, I think it's, at some level, you're gonna run into a situation, the person can't do it. And so of those nineteen, there's probably some of them who have a, there's probably some who can, one is, they don't have the financial capability nor the, a physical ability to do it themselves. So you're gonna deal with those situations and have to make those decisions. So every decision's gonna be a little different, but you gotta get someone to talk to.
Right, and that's, that's the key. If, if somebody can't do it, we, we'd ask them just to contact us, and then we can work through that. There's, there's ways that we can do that. And, and in some cases, in this, we had the situation where we had the pool that needed to be filled in, that that property owner came to us and said, look, I can't afford to do this, but I can afford it if you assess it to my property taxes. And that's what we did. So it's gonna be paid over a period of time. We paid the money upfront. We know we're gonna recoup it and we could, you know, it's much easier when the property owner is, you know, is willing to work with us and understands that, okay, we'll assess it. It'll show up on your property tax bills next year. We can split it over, you know, two years or whatever it is, if, if that's what needs to happen. But if they don't communicate with us, we can't do anything, so.
It could be pretty expensive.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, I've had some branches taken off one of my trees. It was not inexpensive.
If it's, you know, I don't, I'm not, I can give broad ranges from being line cleaner stays. If you got a DB, a TBH, a diameter breast-type tree of, say, twenty or thirty inches, you're probably, depending on what type, type of tree, too. Because it's gonna depend on how much you're gonna have to, you chop up or not.
It is their space worth it to go somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be a thousand to two thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Easily.
Yeah, that, that's, all depends on how, you know, all the other little, you know, pine trees, you know, they're, you gotta start putting them through the chipper and it's, you know.
And access to them, but I imagine they probably have pretty easy access.
One would assume the roads, so. But I don't, I don't think there is a right answer, but we need to be, the answer would be, I think, you're gonna have to tell them that we're gonna take action. If it's been two years, what else are you gonna do?
So do you want, what I'm at guessing is, at least for the seven that we've not heard of from two years, is sort of go back, go back to them and say, this needs to be addressed, or you need to at least communicate with us by September first. And if not, we're going to do something, and then we can, we can figure out what that something is at, at that point. The other ones, we'll probably send out another letter just in case they didn't get the first one. Or sometimes it's a rental situation and the owner and the, you know, the, you know, so we'll make sure we send a second notice. That group will then be, next year, we can sort of follow up with and, and if they haven't taken care of it. Or if it hasn't taken care of itself, I guess is the other thing, so.
Yeah, and, and, you know, if you see one that's dangerous, I think it's one of those issues that you have to address it now. And when I say dangerous, it's obviously something that's gonna hit a car or.
Yeah, and, and if it were, I mean, if it were to that point, we probably would have already taken care of it, you know. I mean, these are just dead trees that are obviously dead. And what happens with dead trees is they're gonna fall over at some point. You know, when the windstorm comes or the something happens, that's when they're gonna do it, so. Okay, well, we'll, we'll pursue definitely those seven a little bit more. We'll send out second notices to all the other ones. And then knowing that we'll follow up with them next year if they have not completed it.
Mark, do we send letters to the tenant and also to the property owner in case of rental?
We've probably sent it to the property owner. We probably sent it to whoever was on the property tax records. And maybe not to, we may not have sent it, we may not have sent it to the address. We probably sent it to the property owner, but I'll have to verify that.
Probably would hurt to send it to the occupant. They might come and put some pressure. The guy's, hey, we got a problem here.
Right. That happens a lot with water issues.
You know.
Yeah. Okay, I'll check and see, and, and then we can do that. Okay, just a couple of things. The community video scripts, I put a draft. So we have these three videos that they're going to redo. The mayor already took care of the welcome video last week and did the, we did the script for that. But these other two, there's, one of the videos is based on education. One is quality life. I just ask you if you have any comments, suggestions. Just feel free to, to send those to me. The education one. But they are going to come and do filming for this in the next couple weeks in the community, they'll be taking HD video of different areas of the community, and then after that, they'll, they'll do the voiceover and tie it in with the, with the videos and pictures that we've provided to them. So, if you have anything in the next week or so, please pass that on to me, and we'll make sure this gets edited as, as it should be. The streetlight conversion, we talked about it at the previous meeting, converting all these streetlights to LED lights. I've been notified by Man Valley Lighting, they're, they've ordered all the lights, and they intend to come to Bellbrook in July to start that changeover, and they hope to get that done relatively quickly. We have 90 lights, I don't know how long it takes to do those, but I, I know they want to get in, and I think one of the reasons we're one of the first ones is because we are a smaller, smaller number of lights, so they can practice on us, I guess, or whatever you want to say. So, they will be around, so if you see some trucks out changing the streetlights, that's what that is going to be. And then finally, the water tower repainting project is scheduled to begin next Tuesday, July 5th, so we'll be draining that water tower over the 4th of July weekend, and then they'll begin their work. They may begin later this week on some of the exterior things, but they'll begin in earnest next week. They have 40 days that that water tower can be out of service, which take, takes us right to their completion date of August 12th. So, this is a contractor out of Sterling Heights, Michigan, that will be coming down to do this work. That is all I have this evening.
Does anyone have any questions for our city manager this evening?
I just have a question. I know the work is paving my neighborhood, do you have any estimated date for that?
No, we're waiting for the contractor. They are, they know that we are ready, whenever they are in the area, they can come and do it, but no, they have not given us a specific date. They actually contacted us early before school is out, and we said, you can't come before school is out, and then we haven't heard from them since, so, so we're just waiting to hear.
But we're still hoping that gets done before school starts.
That is the intent, is to have that done before school starts, so that we avoid some of that. So, I'll have Dale reach out to them again and make sure they know the dates of when school gets back in session, so that they know. It's really, relatively speaking, it's a fairly straightforward project for them, and it's easy for them to do, but it's just getting them here to do it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on, committee reports, service?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Safety?
Uh, nothing, Mayor.
Finance and audit?
Definitely for the season, Mayor.
And I think we have, um, community affairs?
Just emphasize Mark's comments before about the bicentennial, the lecture series, we have two lectures remaining for the library, or for the museum. The July lecture will be held at the Presbyterian Church, and then the August lecture will be back at the Methodist Church Community Room. They've been an interesting mix, different people coming to different ones. The one in July is going to be about Martin Luther King, and the August one will be on drones, so, interesting speakers, interesting topics, no cost, you can get cookies and lemonade after, so, check the schedule on the bicentennial website, bellbrook200.com, and have a fun evening on Tuesday.
The Bellbrook Ted Talks.
Yep, that's about it, yeah. The last one was on the first transcontinental car race, which was really interesting. It was quite a, and Dwight Bartlett did it, and it was, he did a fabulous job, so.
Yeah, Dwight's quite, quite good.
Yeah.
Any other thing, community affairs?
Uh, that's it.
Old business, non-new business. Ohio Division of Liquor Control notices, I'm pretty sure I know where this is at.
Yeah, this is the, what used to be Huevee Wine Bar and Cellar is changing owners to Zemore Wine Cellar and Bistro, so it's just changing the liquor license. This is just something, if council wanted to object to this, we would have to take action, council would have to take action and do that, but it's just the formality. If we don't, there's a box that we'll check and mail it back, and, and this will transfer, there's, there's no issues with this, this license.
Pretty sure we haven't had to make police complaints for, it's a pretty mellow crowd.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I'm glad it's still open, so.
Yeah, me, too.
Uh, so I assume that's none?